Okay, so I left off with. I don't know, kind of this boring wall of windows, but I was trying to demonstrate, you know, basically in this, in this great room. Which is. Uh, really. Here, we could probably get by with drawing. This at eight feet across here, uh, this will probably be, be a case to opening. Here. So trying to connect. Oops. Am I editing that? Yeah, okay. Oh, for a second I wasn't in that editing mode there. But this will kind of be connected. Since you're gonna have a vaulted ceiling. In the living room here, and we've got a fireplace in here too, I need to put in. But what I'm trying to do is connect is. See how. I think the more I think about this, I think that this is gonna have to be. Which way is it vault? Vault's this way, so I've gotta have something here to set my rafters on, and since this. Since this part is up at that height. I think my. What's going on over here?
Yeah, okay.
I think I'm gonna have to raise up this part to ten feet. Just to have something to set my rafters on, and I'll show you in a minute why I think that. So if I was gonna go ahead and raise this part up, is it separated?
Yeah.
To. Oops, wrong part. To this wall. Now that's all up to ten feet. And. You could still put nine foot ceilings in these guest bedroom areas over here. Which would be kind of cozy, 'cause that makes the bedroom areas cozy. And now. Now I can. Let's see, this would have an eight foot opening. Here too. Going up this way. Eight feet. I can start to figure out where. This will come over to here. Yeah, it gets funky, a little funky, but this is why we plan this out. So then, you kind of. Are kind of left with, really, it kind of makes sense. To make the kitchen, and I'm guessing, I'm gonna bet. That they're ten feet anyway. So, but you could make your closet, so we'll isolate this. And. We'll isolate this here. Like that, and we're gonna go ahead and assume, I think it's a safe assumption. That all this is gonna be ten feet, and the reason I think that is because. I think I saw, I saw some tray, trays or coffers. In the, uh, oh, look here. I need, is that nine feet? What is that? That's still nine feet, yeah. This part needs to be raised up too. There we go. Ten feet. What that does is it gives me an opportunity. To do trays or coffers in the kitchen, which I think are there, and it also connects this part. Over here. This funky part. Now again. What that means is. This is funky. Funky, 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 funky. What that means is. What does that mean? What does it mean? What does it all mean? That means the part. Of my second floor. I need to bring me some lines up, well. That means this part, am I still editing walls? Yeah, so I'm gonna draw myself. A line, a point here. Well, I said. I'm just gonna run this up there, what I'm doing is running myself some points up in the air. So that I, I know where my borders are. This was up. This was up. This part is up. And you'll see why I'm doing this in a minute. This is, this gets funky, this gets funky right here, where. I'm gonna draw it. What in the world? Oh, I accidentally hit. Something that brought it. Help. And what this does is, and I can eliminate. How's this gonna work? We're gonna need this to sit on here. But the actual corner. Goes out to here, and then. I know some, I know you're thinking, what the heck is he doing? I'll show you. I'm trying to figure out where my. Floor bow needs to pop up. So see, now I can turn that back on, and see, now I've got all these little zones I can draw in. That's the border of it, so now I can edit this floor. You see, this is my floor above. And I go from here. Uh, go on with, yeah. Go from there. Here. 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 There. It's that part of the border, and then. Really, this goes from here, just over to here. So that means this whole. Thing. Can be brought up. To that level. See, and this is. But this part can remain at. At, um. Nine feet, and that, you think, well, that's not saving you a lot of money, but this is a lot of, all these walls remain the same height. Is a pretty big deal. As far as cash, so I'm gonna turn off my first four walls. So I can get under here. To see. Where these zones are. Because. I should have drawn these. I'm gonna grab all these and move them down now, a foot. These are just my points. And I can't see them, 'cause they're not sticking down. Far enough, but now. Now I can see them. To know, and I can go back and edit this. How's that work? That, that. 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 Then from there. Over to there. And then. For now, if I just go from here to there, and all this can go up twelve. See? Now, that's your differences in ceiling heights. And now I've got, I can get rid of all these reference lines now. Those two, and then that one. And. That. Oop. Good thing for a control and Z. Be careful what you're deleting. So if I was editing this. That line can come out too. Trying to clean all this up. And this can come out, I don't think that's gonna hurt anything though, like that. Just to kind of clean it up. So you can see where it gets a little complicated, and these two floor systems can meld. Together now, they're all on the same plane. And really, this part of the floor gets taken out. So if I. Draw this. Over. I should just be able to. Blow, take this part out. Said I would. Because this gets vaulted. And I can put my walls, turn my walls back on now, to verify that, yeah. And then I can delete these reference points here. Now. What is that line going across there? Got this funky, something funky here. Where's that? That's part of the tray, that's part of that. Let's check. Yep. Okay, now. This is where it gets, this is where it gets interesting because. What is that? What is that floor? Yeah, this gets. Delete it. Oops. Why did that happen? This really comes across here. So that should be, I should be able to delete that. Oops. Well. What's going on there? I should be able to have this. Back to there, yeah, and something's funky, yep. This is what you gotta be careful of, these funky little. Things here. But when you go back to start detailing everything. You'll be wondering what the heck is going on. Now, turn my first four walls back on, now. Are these at ten feet or nine feet? That's ten feet. So, uh. Oh, I see him. Getting myself a little confused, now if I turn this floor off. These, this is where you can start to save some money, because now. Your joists don't have to be, I mean, my spans are twelve, I could probably. Just use like two by tens, yeah, there's no real. Long spans here. I think it's a little long, but I can use. I don't have to use these big, thick sixteen inch. Eye joists that I've got on here. This can go down to like twelve inches. Let's make it real, it would be. Uh, it would be. Well, we'll just leave it there for now. We'll detail it later. Now. So what this shows me is that. I'm gonna figure out how this is gonna get vaulted. Let's just pretend we're starting off with a rafter here. Let's draw our first rafter. So I'm gonna leave in, I'm gonna use two by tens, but I'm gonna leave in about. Six inches on this haunch. And then I'm, oop, I said six, didn't I? Then I'm gonna come over twelve. And I'm gonna go up twelve. I think this is a twelve twelve right here. I'm gonna delete that. And I'm gonna make my nine and a quarter. Up my two five. I think you can see where I'm going with this already. Now, am I editing walls or anything? No. So. I'm just gonna draw myself a piece out here for right now, and I think this overhang ought to be at least sixteen inches. Although. You gotta be careful. Because. And then we're gonna come back inch and a half. We're gonna pretend like we're actually drawing our rafter here, 'cause I don't wanna waste. Any effort, and I'm gonna. Assume. I need to start my group, that's what I need to do, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna delete that. Delete that. Delete that, and I need to delete. That part, so what I'm gonna do, 'cause I need to start editing this as a group. Select. That, oops. Oh yeah, I do, I do want that. Now, here we go. Now I don't have to worry about any other geometry around this, so I'm gonna bring myself up a, I'm gonna bring this up. Oops, I missed my. Just gonna bring it up to where I think it might be. That maroon colored line means that I'm on the same. Plane or in the same. I guess that would be the s- in the same, I ain't, I'm aligned with what I. Started out, so what we would want is this. To be in the center. Which is. Nineteen four and a quarter, so that would be. Nine, let's see, nine foot four, nine foot six, nine foot eight and an eighth. Don't I have a center line down here somewhere? There we go, that's it. And then. This would be back three quarters. For our ridge. And we should have us a rafter here, if I can quit jumping around. Hmm. What in the world? Oh, I get it. I get it. Need to bring my rafter over here. What is going on? What is going on? What is going on? Still not on the. What is going on? My, my line is not on the wall. Nine foot eight and one quarter. Now. Sometimes it's just. Difficult to draw.
Three D.
So I'm gonna come back three quarters for my ridge. And that's my rafter. And it's inch and a half thick. One point five. There, finally. There's my rafter. Alright, so we're gonna set it flush. With the outside of the wall. I think that seat cut's a little big, I don't think, I need to adjust that. That's too big. It needs to be more like a. Come up. What is that? Or still kind of big. Looks like gimme. Just make this three. Three inches. I mean, honestly, actually. This really kind of is typically. The same thickness as your wall. But. That would be on a two before, so really, it needs to be, this needs to be at least four inches. Yeah, okay. So that's what you would do, you would, your, your seat cut would be. At least down to there. So that's all we're gonna do for now. Oops. I'm gonna take this out. Like that. Oops. My line didn't connect or something. Good lord, what is going on? What is going on? I'm losing my mind. Felt like I was losing my mind. There for a minute. Just had a line that wasn't connecting or something. Alright, that's enough of that. So. The point here is, is that. I'll have these rafters coming across here, but they'll, this is a vaulted ceiling, so you won't have. Get anal here, um, so you'll have these rafters coming across here. At, um. Sixteen inches, and I'm gonna guess there's like twenty of them. I got close, didn't I? Ooh, whoa, way too many. Oops, I can read that one back. Like that. And then. You know, typically wouldn't get in. To, um. This kind of detail this early, but I'm just trying to demonstrate. I'm gonna copy that, and I'm gonna mirror it. Oops, wrong one. Alright, Tony, you've done this before. But you're not acting like it. That node right there, there we go. Gotta get the right one, now for now, I'm gonna pick this, oh wait, these tail, these rafters aren't gonna have tails. So what I should have done was made me a. Should copy this one. Like that. I should have, uh, just. Really acting like a, a, a noob today, some of this stuff. Is that the center one? Whoa. Why can't I grab the center? I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna. Make it simple. Let's just rotate this stupid thing. Duh. I was just trying to mirror it and I couldn't grab the little node, it was too, so, so close together. But these rafters won't have any. Tails over here. Now I can. Copy this. Put it right here. Move it over inch and a half, cause there'll be a. Ridge between it. Why is some kinda black hole? Said one point five, it just freaked out on me. So, I guess the point here is really. Um. I might as well finish this, I started a crazy mess. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen. So I would copy this over. Times fifteen. Where's my asterix? That. Hey, John. Sorry, I've been trying to keep up with the comments here. Two forty-three, what time is it? Oh, it's just four minutes ago. Yeah, this is your new house, it's only gonna cost eight hundred thousand dollars. So that. That shows you the possible vault. Um, now I'm gonna start myself a roof framing layer, don't I? Roof framing. Oops, why is it all caps? Roof framing. And now I can grab that group and put everything in roof framing. Roof framing, there. Now, I need to turn it off. I can just turn it off. But. I guess, I guess if I'm gonna be anal, I might as well finish. The analness, which means. I'll go in here and put myself a ridge. Board. Now, why does that look taller? Any, because it's an optical illusion? Yeah. Okay. That's good. No, something is weird. Oh, I, I got it, it's, I didn't move it. That's right, this one, I had to move back. Now it should work. Yep. Now. Make that a group by itself, how tall is that? Oh. That's unfortunate because I'm gonna show this as like a. A fourteen inch, I like to use, I know they're kind of expensive, but. I like to use fourteen inch LVLs, if I've got a, a two by ten at, um. Now what you could do is, you could use a two by eight rafters. Here, that's really why I didn't wanna get too far into. But. It really depends on what kinda insulation value you're gonna use, it gets, you get into a lot of issues here. With, uh, the size of rafters you use, but the point is you can't use a ridge. Uh, that's less in height, like you can't use a ridge board that's, that leaves a gap here below your rafter. So then you have to come up with something, like in this case, like a fourteen inch LVL. That you could use as a ridge. The nice thing about using LVLs. Is that they become like a ridge beam. Which normally you wouldn't have to have, but what they do is they help. Bring it all the way out to the end here. They keep, um. And then what you would have is, that would stick out if, no it won't, cause this part of the roof will be. Yeah, it will stick out. So, let's say we're gonna have a. Two by six, uh, barge rafter. Uh, this part can be, it'll need to be about five inches, it'll need to be a little less. But what I always do is I always notch these. And I let this stick out to support the barge rafter. Sixteen. Uh, minus, yeah, maybe like that. Cause what you would have is a. You'd have a barge rafter out here, but it would only be a. Two by six, which we could fix. Really easy. Five point five. That's good, cause that's. Get rid of all that mess. Don't need a bird's mouth on a barge rafter, cause it's your, basically your overhang. Rafter. Get rid of that. That. And then you can go back up here and figure out. And this is why I like drawing all the rafters out, cause now I can figure out. When I'm doing my ridge beam, uh, it will be, I do it first, I cut it first, and, cause I have to. And now I know. And I wanna leave that up a little bit because. Your, um. Your soffit material. Let's just make it six. Only get six and a half. Again, I didn't wanna get anal right now with these details, but, cause I'm still in the schematic. Design phase, and this is what you have to be careful of, is getting. Letting yourself get bogged down. With this, these details, because if he decides not to put a. A, um. A vault in here, I've done all this for nothing, so, we need to get farther along. But. The, the point. That I've got, I do have to work out is, see right here. These. I'll have to put a. LVL. Right here. A double. From. We're gonna make this LVL. Uh, it's gonna be. The LVL is, uh, I should make it twelve inches long for now, and one point seven five inches thick. An LVL is an inch and three quarters thick, and we're gonna need probably. At least eleven and seven eighths. Eleven and seven eighths LVL. So, what we're gonna do is bring that all the way over to. Let, let me make that a group first. Just make sure I'm just making that. A group by itself. Now I don't have to worry about it. Let's turn this floor off, so I can see. This is why you need good layer management. So while you're drawing, you can move, turn things off. So, what's gonna happen here is. These. You might say to yourself, Tony, why would you have that? Um. Figuring that out myself right now. Because this. This is actually part of the coffer, of the tray ceiling. This is not. The load bearing condition, so when you're framing this roof. If I turn off my tray ceilings, see, when you're framing this roof, the tray ceiling's not even there. You need an LVL that's gonna go. Uh. All the way over to here, see? And you're gonna need two of them. And then what happens is, these. Uh, actually, they need to be moved over. Why is that? See, this is why I should've made that rafter a component. I've got some ugliness going on with these rafters, but I'll fix them later. And you can also see here. What happens when your walls don't line up perfectly. Um, well, it would be okay, this, this rafter. Can be, when you're framing, can just sit here. On top of that, but for some reason that wall is. Yep. On the Obama plan? Am I still broadcasting? Yep. Just check there for a second, but. So. I guess the whole point, oh, dang it, I got a black screen.